You've got to update your service. Who you got service with?
ATN two.
Oh, well, I'll explain. It takes a while for them to get it.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council meeting for the city of Villarica is now in session. We will stand and have the pledge.
Not the pledge, I'd like to pray. Invocation.
The invocation by Mayor Pro Tim Carter and the pledge.
Let's bow ahead, please, in a little reverence. Our heavenly Father, we are very thankful for all the many blessings you have bestowed upon our country, the freedoms that we have in this nation. It's one nation under God. We ask that you would be with us tonight with our city of Villarica and would make decisions for the citizens and the future of our little city in Georgia. Lead, guide, and direct us with the decisions that we make so that they will be betterment to our population. Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start our meeting by, we have some ceremonial proclamations, but due to some of the family members needing some more time, the proclamation honoring Kate Pinkett would be postponed to our October meeting. So next we have employee anniversaries. Our city manager will be in charge of that. We have five, 10, and 15-year people that are being recognized for their service to our community. So, Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If our department heads will go ahead and join me at the front of the room and will bring up our honorees. There is one from the police department that will not be able to make it. It is our court clerk, Ms. Amanda Haney will be not in present, but everyone else should be.
Chief Fu. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
Did he just call 911 or?
I guess. Please don't. He's not an American. Scott. Here he comes. Yay! We're waiting on you.
You don't mind we take it out, you pay them.
You had been disordered, Miss.
Yeah.
All right, so this is an opportunity to recognize each of the employees. We do them at, on the fives, if you will. So five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. And so under the five-year category, not here, would be Ancele Bridges, Chief, you have...
Freya Sheffield.
And then Vicki, you've got Coach. All right, these are the five-year folks. So if you want to come out, we'll do a quick photo with the five-year folks and their department heads. We'll do that real quick. Yeah, I think they take them right off the HR records. In fact, I learned something very interesting this week, but I'm not getting embarrassed about. All right, five years. All right, smile. Oh, I just learned this. Watch this. Smile, smile, smile. See, completely hands raised. It's a new setting. It's just one of the upgrades. So around them. So don't say smile.
I am, really.
Okay. All right, now, let's see. 10 years, 10 years.
Bush recognition.
Just one.
Sergeant Lou Hart.
All right. I'm just curious. If you can say the magic word, let's see if it works. Smile, smile, smile.
He is.
That is cool. Say it again.
No, I can't give three times.
Smile. All right.
Can't give it three times.
I love it. I did, I did.
He's being crazy.
Man is not here. Nancy's not here. Not yet. All right. And then, yes, thank you. All right, now we'll bring up our department head for Public Works, which is Pete Chavano. Pete, here you go. And if you want to bring him up, and this, come on up. I almost said, bring him up. Come on up, preacher. That's exactly what he's known in the city. Kevin, Kevin is one of what I consider our success stories. We took a risk on Kevin. He was over in the streets department, and I was impressed by his work ethic, and so we decided to give him a chance and move him over into the just recently collections department. He has goals. He wanted to be eventually, I believe, in the water department, if I'm not mistaken. If it's wastewater, tell me. But I think it was in water. So do I have it backwards? Okay, all right. If not, you just have to correct me if I am wrong. So God bless you. So we knew that you had sort of paid your dues to move up. So we moved him over and said, okay, you do realize you're going to have to get in some ditches and dig with water and all that. Well, as it has, some other opportunities came by, and so we started to cross-train. Because one of the things that we've been doing in the city is cross-training every employee so they have a backup. So we started at the same time cross-training on locates. And basically, if you ever dig in your yard, the first thing you want to do is do what? You want to call what? 811.
811.
811. Call before you did, okay? Even in your yard, even if you're putting on the fence, which you should check on the city on permit first, by the way. But if you're digging your yard, you want to call 811. Well, Kevin was cross-trained. Now he's actually officially our locator in distribution collections. Simultaneously, Pete will go ahead and explain this license, and I'll go ahead and film it rather than just take a picture, because I'm excited about this one. But I don't think there's something where I just take video tapes. I think I actually have to push the button. Give me a second.
You can't say...
My finger goes up, you're good.
Can't say video?
Okay, you're good.
We're very proud of Kevin because of his accomplishment. And of course, he's taken one step up to get this license as a distribution operator. He can oversee the activities when he constructs an activity of installing pipes and things going in the ground. It's a very important license that he's obtained, and we're very proud of him. So for that, thanks very much. Appreciate your hard work.
Okay, I'm here to take the photo. That video tape, I got to end it that little smidgen in the very beginning. So, ready? Oh, yeah. Smile, 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 smile. Smile, smile, smile. It's not as fast as my fingers. I'm sorry. All right, there we go. Kevin, congratulations.
Why did you use your just to push the button?
You wanted to find smidgen?
Smidgen.
Smidgen?
Yep, smidgen.
No, don't start.
Okay, okay.
Let's not go there. As someone said this weekend, it's like, mm, round as a balloon.
Okay.
Okay, so, Madam Mayor, the floor on this one's yours, and you'll be joined by the Public Works Director, Vicki Coleman. I mean, Parks Recreation and Leisure Services. This is for the proclamation.
Did you just get signed a public work?
That's okay. You know how many times I've made that mistake?
It was the cross-training, you know, just in case.
Testing. And, Madam Mayor, here you go there. And here is the proclamation. And if you want to pull up, and then I'll record it. I'll come up and join as you please. Don't be shy. Come on. Come on up here, up here. Come on, Chrissy. Chrissy, put your hands in line the way you want them.
What'd you think would look better?
Come on. There's one copy for each, and then... Is there not five? Okay, okay. All right, so let's see. Before we go here. Yeah, we can move over. Yeah, we can move you over this way so we get you... All right, Madam Mayor, anytime you're ready.
Okay, this is the proclamation from the city of Villarica. Whereas perfection in this world is seldom achieved, and repeat perfection is rarer still. And whereas the Villarica Senior Center staff has achieved a perfect 100 score on its food service establishment inspection report from the Georgia Department of Public Health for the past year, and whereas the Villarica Senior Center staff has received the perfect, the same perfect 100 score for the previous nine years resulting in a perfect 10 consecutive years of perfect scores for the food service establishment. I think they need a hand for that. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of Villarica for their, for that, for their perfect accomplishment, the city hereby honors the Villarica Senior Center staff under the supervision and Parks Recreation and Leisure Services Director Vicki B. Coleman and staff being comprised of Ernestine Mullins, Senior Center Manager, Brittany Rutley, Senior Assistant, Dorothy Sue Worthen, Senior Assistant, Elizabeth Barber, Senior Center Aid, Ellen Swain, Senior Center Driver. She's a good driver, y'all. It is further proclaimed that the city of Villarica and the patrons of the Villarica Senior Center are indebted to these individuals for their hard work, dedication, and commitment, and for their service in the management and operation of the Senior Center food services during the past 10 years. It is further proclaimed that the Villarica Senior Center staff be publicly recognized by the mayor and council in a public ceremony, and that this recognition be permanently memorialized in the records of the city. It is so proclaimed this sixth day of September 2016, and this is signed by the council members along with our city clerk, Mr. Lee Sabdoa.
This is a major accomplishment, and congratulations to all of you. If you can go out and find me another senior center anywhere in the state of Georgia that's got 10, 10 consecutive, let me know, and we'll take you there for lunch. It's not, it doesn't exist. It doesn't exist. Yeah, or a restaurant for that business. A perfect score. So, Council, would you like to join them for a group photo? We've been sitting on this news for a little bit, but I hope you all don't mind. You all were graciously impatient about this. But not, not everybody in the city gets a proclamation, so this is, this is exciting. All right, Ms. Chrissy, is everybody ready to meet today?
Oh, we've got to take Berlin. He won't smile.
Hey, you know that just took a photo?
Because I said smile.
There you go again. You just took another.
Smile, smile, smile.
Now you know my secret word.
Vicki, come in just a little closer, please.
Okay, everyone show us your proclamations. All right, let's make sure we can see everybody. I can see faces. All right, look at me, not at Chrissy.
Don't look at Berlin. Smile. They smile at me.
That's why, no, that's definitely what Berlin's doing. He's smiling at you right now. All right, here we go. All right, thank you. You need one, everybody? Anyone with the family? Anyone? You want a photo with family and the mayor? All right, thank you. That's an amazing achievement. And by the way, I'm coming to see you all for lunch on Friday. I'll be there with my boots on.
Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I get a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda for this evening?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor, before your vote, staff wishes to pull B four. B as in boy four. It's the adoption of zoning map. We'll bring that to you most likely at your next council meeting, please.
Okay.
If we wanted to table anything, would we do it now or wait until we get to the item?
Tabling would have to be during the item, I believe.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, all right. So four.
Okay, is that... Now with number, B four gone. She made the motion, I second.
I make a motion that we now...
Adopt the agenda.
Adopt the revised agenda.
Okay, I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we will revise the agenda and approve what has been moved over and accepted as it is. Do, all in favor of the motion, show of hands. Opposes? No. Agenda adopted. Next, we will have our council updates by our city manager.
A couple, let's see, a couple updates. Currently, the paving project has started on 78. Obviously, they're not to the Villarica portion yet, but they, they have set up staging on leased land in Temple. The, the right-of-way staking has been started and is progressing. It's, it's a, it's, I forget the word I was trying to say, but it's going to take a while, because obviously, you know, they go in there and do the surveys and everything like that. So they're making their way, staking the, the right-of-way for the North Loop project. The state's also in there doing the land appraisals for potential property acquisition for that project. The, the Gateway project is now 100% complete. Staff working with the inmate crews went in, put down the weed barrier. We utilized, and certainly want to thank the folks out at the Douglas County landfill who generously donated all the mulch for the Gateway project. And staff either were added also put in a drip irrigation system underground. So very proud of the results and believe it looks beautiful down there. And those are pretty much the highlights. We've got, from city staff.
Madam Mayor?
Does the city, okay. Does the council have any concerns?
Yes, not so much a concern, but just a thank you. We had the Don Rich rodeo come through town, and just want to appreciate Clint Chance, not only for the nice event they put on and the entertainment, but that they get out right afterwards and get all those signs picked up, just like they told us they would. So just want to thank them for that.
Okay, any other concerns from the council? All right, next we have public comments. Please come forward. If you have a comment, state your name, your address, and please keep them to three minutes if possible. Oh, I'm sorry.
I forgot to admit there, I thought the city attorney was about to make a public comment. I was like...
I thought it was going to be a...
You're making me nervous.
It's getting to fix in my mind.
The mayor used to do it.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Ronnie Tixbury, the Library Director of West Georgia Regional Library. I'm not a Villarica resident. I feel like I'm adopted, though, because I've been here most of the last year. I just wanted to pass on the fact that this month is library card signup month nationwide in public libraries, and just wanted to invite everybody in the room. If you don't have a library card, to go to the library that's still at 70 Horace Luther Drive here in Villarica, and sign up and get your library card, and take advantage of all the many free services that we have available for you at your public library. Thank you.
That's okay, that if you want it. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward with a public comment at this time? Here and on that closes the public comment, we'll go to section A, which is finances by Ms. Hefty. First, we have budget amendments.
Good evening. This is a summary that you saw last time I did make a correction to add the hotel portion, but do you want me to go through them again, or is there any question about particular ones?
Maybe for the benefit of the audience, they weren't here.
Okay. Yes, these are the proposed budget amendments for 2016 as of through August. Broken it down by type. The first section, these are transfers between funds, so they don't impact the city's overall budget, but it does impact the different funds budgets. So the first one, we had a vacant position in the operator and, the operator and training in the water treatment plant. We're moving that to the Main Street Department that has now taken over tourism. This is adding a position to that department. So again, not changing the overall city full-time positions, just transferring. The next one, we saved some money on the repairs of the inmate crew vans instead of purchasing new ones. So we have moved, well, we're asking to move 30,000 to the police department for the purchase of a vehicle. Thirdly, this was, as we mentioned last time, we have absorbed the increase in the health insurance costs within each department. Public Works, though, has departments in general fund and the water sewer fund, and although they could absorb it within their department in whole, I need to cross-funds to fix some of those individual sections. So that's 14,000. Fourth, this is using contingency money for the, the work that's being done in this year for the 2017 CDVG project. This is coming out of contingency, but I am leaving 65,000 in contingency for the other item that's on the agenda for the North Loop soil testing. The next section, this does increase the revenue and expense for the budget. The first one is increase in the, it's two-part. It's increasing the revenue for the, for projected revenue increase in our water sewer fund, and also increasing the line item for the water purchases. We were 100% purchasing our water from January to July from the Carroll County Water Authority. So that's 500,000.
How much was that?
500,000.
How much was in January to July that we purchased?
We, as of the end of July, we were over budget by 400,000, around there. So now that the water plant's back online, I'm estimating that we'll need 500,000 total.
Okay, that was not for totally water purchases, though, right? That was some other issues, things like fixing the water plant?
That is the line item for water purchases.
That's water purchasing. You used your SPLUS funds that were budgeted for the actual physical repairs.
Okay.
We have not exceeded the repair budget as allocated in the budget, sir.
This is a budgeted item.
Second on that, in that section, is to increase the budget for bond agent fees. This, this item was just not budgeted. That's $6,000. And next is to increase the budget for hotel motel tax projections by 40,000. We only budgeted 98,000 in revenue, but it's coming in at 16% higher than last year so far. So we are increasing that by 40,000.
You say 40?
I'm seeing 30 down here.
It's 40 new.
It's 40. It's in the new, the revised.
Well, I got this off him today.
This is, I'm still on the summary page.
He is too, but it's the old one.
I think I might have the old one, too.
Last is use of reserves. This is, we discussed this last time, that we had an increase in legal fees this year due to some unexpected situations, including the resignation of the mayor and interim mayor, charter review, and the property tax issues that we've had. So I'm asking to use reserve for that. Okay, going to the next page. This summarizes the change in each fund, whether their revenues are increasing, expenditures are increasing, or use of reserves. So in the general fund, these changes would increase the revenues by 38,197 expenditures. And again, these are all the items we've already talked about. In total, the expenditures would increase by 68,197, and the use of fund balance for legal fees would be 30,000. In the hotel motel fund, well, yeah, where did I get 40,000? Maybe I saw 40,000. I'm sorry. Okay, increase in projected revenues is 25,000, and, but then we've removed the Board of Tourism portion, because we used to send all the money to Board of Tourism. We've taken that out, and we've now split it between going to the general fund and going to the creative CVB. Okay, next fund is the water sewer fund. The total increase in revenue is 530,000, and offsetting again with the expenditures of 530,000. And lastly is the solid waste fund. This is just a wash, but it's moving between funds for the insurance. So that's not a change that I wanted to show up. Any change or any questions about that?
The only thing I think would be helpful to have clarity maybe for the audience, because had I not gone back and watched the video since I were, missed the work session, was that vacant position, when you see somebody going from water treatment plant to Main Street, that could be confusing for why that occurred and what's happening with that vacant position. I would want an explanation on that.
Yes, and I believe David explained it more last time, but the, we had a water, an operator and training in the water treatment plant budget that was never filled, and with the, I guess with the agreement now with the tourism board creating, well, that going away, now the CVB, we have added a position to the Main Street Department. So again, the full-time positions, the FTEs of the city have not changed in total. We're just switching it between two funds. If you have anything to add to that?
No, the, the budget amendments are reflective of prior council actions, so this is housekeeping to come back. But, but yeah, sometimes when you see budget amendments, if they're this far after the fact to consolidate, it's not always reflective of what the council did or why. But when the council did the CVB, not only was it a transfer of an existing position where we said that would not increase the FTE, but also the new contract was reversed where it was a 40-60 contract, now it's a 60-40. So for, to cover the administrative costs, those are, that 60% is unrestricted. So that's going into the fund to offset that OIT position.
And C V B is convention and visitors bureau. Don't you love it when they talk in that kind of lingo? And clarify for me also... And clarify for me also, water treatment plant, was that position also something where, when we hired Pete, he also covered for that, or am I thinking of something else?
No, in the Water Department, when we hired Pete Savanos as a department head, he's dual-certified as a Class 1 in both water and waste water. So, he took the role of the operator in charge for the Water Department, and therefore, we did not have to backfill a position because he was able to serve as the OIC.
So, we didn't even need that position anymore?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
No further finish. So, do we get a, have the council finished with their questions? So, do we get the vote on this?
Yeah, it would be appropriate for somebody to move to approve the proposed budget amendments.
So, do we get a vote to, a motion to approve the budget amendment?
No move.
Second?
It's been properly moved. The second is that we will accept the report coming from Ms. Hefty on the budget amendments. All in favor, show of hands. Oppose is none. Budget amendment proposed, stands, it is. Next is number three, since we get a clearing on number two, we go to number three, public hearing in ordinance for our 2016 millage rate. I think it's, yes.
This is listed as a public hearing. You probably could hear me, and I didn't even have my red light on.
Ooh.
I realized when I listened back to the audio about whenever I speak, it's a lot louder, it's a little different than the city attorney over there.
That's after you told us to make sure ours wasn't on.
Exactly. I realized, I turned mine off, and Mr. Hee came over to speak to me. So, this is a public hearing. The City Council has already met its legal obligations of three hearings. This is an additional hearing, so it gives you the opportunity to hear a comment from the public prior to considering the 2016 millage rate. The, the, the city has met all of its legal requirements for the number of hearings and the advertisements. The city has also advertised in both counties, both Douglas County and also Carroll County. We're only required to advertise in the legal organ for where we're incorporated, which is Carroll County, for transparency. We did it in both counties. We also did an additional publication. We're only required two publications. We did three publications. So, in this case, this would be hearing number four. We're required three. We've done three advertisements, we're required two. With that said, back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, do we have anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? At this time, I will entertain a motion to set the 2016 millage rate. What do I hear?
Well... Hearing no motion. I'm, I'm, I'm moving that we, we table this to the next, next meeting.
I'll second that.
If, may I ask a question before we vote on that? If we table this, is that going to cause a problem for bills getting sent out from Carroll County and Douglas County if we don't set a millage rate?
It did in last year. It was in February when we sent them out.
I don't think that's accurate, and I think, from the legal standpoint, the answer to that question is yes, it will cause a problem. Because you're stopping, you will be stopping both counties from sending out their tax bills, or else they will send them out without Villarica taxes, and we'll be on our own in sending out our own tax bills.
Okay, the biggest problem I hate is Carroll County, I never saw the data from Carroll County. I saw an assumption, but they never really supplied us with the data they were supposed to.
My understanding, and David, you may know more about the up-to-date details, but they have submitted, Carroll County has submitted a preliminary digest to us, and it's my understanding that there was not sufficient appeals that will delay the approval of that digest, and that Carroll County is probably in line to have their digest approved soon.
And they said they were going to give us a final digest on the 2nd of September.
Is that correct?
They said that they would actually get an additional update to their digest. They also had indicated that the City of Villarica would not see much of a variance. Under Georgia law, as long as our published numbers aren't plus or minus 3%, then the setting of the millage rate will be acceptable to the state. With the, with the appeals under 8%, our threshold is within the acceptable limits, and the Tax Commissioner on, in Carroll County has verified such. On the flip side, to answer the disenfranchised, this, over the weekend, there was a published article that Douglas County, because of this delay, has already had to advertise a notice for a potential tax allocation note, or TAM, and they're seeking $3 million. This board might want to consider loaning Douglas County that $3 million to make ends meet.
It was my understanding that we did, it was my understanding that we had, did not have the knowledge about the, the people that were trying to re, have their reassessment, reevaluate.
Appeals, right. And the last day to do that was September 1st.
Okay, with that knowledge, see, I didn't have that knowledge. That's the reason I wanted to put it off, to find out how many other appeals there were going to be. So, if that's the case, then I withdraw my, my motion.
I withdraw my second. Now, on the subject of the millage rate, we suddenly have a windfall of $300,000 and a half thousand dollars of revenue that was not included in our budget. And it is my opinion, since we passed a water rate increase of 5% in December, which the mayor vetoed, which we overrode in January, and passed that on to the homeowner, that it wouldn't be fair to pass this totally along to the homeowner, too. So, I would, I'd make a motion that we share it between the city and the homeowner, set the millage rate at 6.25.
Well, looking at all the things that are, are being said, with the $100,000 house, and that's 40% of that, the taxes today are $260 for the city tax rate. The increase that we're all talking about is, and then not necessarily in percentages, but it's based on $18 a year, which is roughly a nickel a day increase. And with, you're, you're right, there's a $300,000...
$300,000 and a half.
Okay, you know, we can take $300,000 in water pipes tomorrow and not cover a third of the city, more like a tenth of the city as far as redoing water pipe. So, I don't call that a windfall. I call that being able to, to do things with this city that, that people are expecting to do, rather than have to come back up each week or each month trying to find money from boy Peter and Pa and Paul, or whatever you want to call it. In one case, we actually moved a, a position from one place to another. I just, I, I don't see the big issue.
That was an unused position, which they never filled. But the problem I have with the whole thing is, is one of fairness to the people. I do believe we should split it. I do believe the homeowner should get a share of the revenue. That would actually cut their tax increase in half, the amount that they're going to see, the ones that got reassessed. So, I think it's only fair that we, they suddenly got...
I also think it's time we start looking at, instead of taking $800,000 a year out of the General Fund to supplement some of the other things, that we are able to do some other things with that money, rather than taking $800,000 out.
I totally agree with the $800,000, because we started, the reason we did, we increased 5% on the water, that's an enterprise fund, and we started trying to get these enterprise funds to pay for themselves, and it was part of our projected goals through the years.
So, what you're saying is that we won't raise the taxes at 6.25, but we're going to go up on the water and sewer rate?
We're going to have to make the enterprise funds pay for themselves, one way or another, or we're going to keep borrowing from the General Fund, no matter what.
We're going to have to do something with the enterprise funds. We cannot do a partial rollback or whatever without addressing the issue that we keep having to take from the main budget and pull it over to the enterprise fund, which is supposed to sustain itself. So, I would hope that we would address in making that more self-sustainable, like it's supposed to be. We may not be able to do it all at once, but we've got to do something, because the property owners are supplementing it.
And the property owners carry the burden of the city.
So, I would, I'm amenable to the partial rollback, 6.25.
6.25.
But I would hope that it would be the desire of the council to address what's going on in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, and that we start solving the deficit that's occurring there.
So, am I hearing a motion?
You had a motion. What we're waiting on, it hasn't been seconded yet.
Oh, I second that motion.
There's been a motion in second that we will roll back the millage rate to 6.25. All in favor? So, we have a tie here, so...
Which means that there's been no affirmative action taken yet, so you're still at the point of needing to set a millage rate?
All right. So, I need a motion, another motion, that we can do something, that we can set this millage rate.
The hardest part of all this whole scenario is the water rates that we have now and the sewer rates don't need to go up, like we did last time, just out of the clear blue. But also with the understanding that the people in this city have to understand that there's $800,000 that is supplemented out of the General Fund to that, and, and it's got to stop somewhere. Now, the question is going to be, do we do a 6.50, which I said a while ago, if you look at it, it's $18 a year for a house worth $100,000, or do you go up $5 a month on water and sewer rates? It's, it's, it's going to even out somewhere down the road. I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's a correct answer.
But the difference is that people are paying for the service of that water. We have people that are paying for that, it's not even theirs. They're paying for the service for somebody else. So, we want that enterprise account to be paid for the people that are receiving the 40% of the population on the Douglas County side is supplementing it, and also the rest of us, I mean, be honest, our family qualifies for that senior discount, but I looked at the senior discounts, and this is not going to be popular. I looked at what they are in water, sewer, and garbage pickup, and we're selling a candy bar for 75 cents that cost us a dollar to make, and that's why we're losing money. You can't keep giving those discounts in all those areas, and we qualify as a recipient of that, but I think it's a little excessive. I think we have to start backing out of that discount slowly, so people don't get hit with it all at once.
But we're not talking about discounts now. We're talking about a, a rate for water and sewer, possibly down the road, versus a millage rate for the property that you own. And if it means the senior citizens are going to take a hit, I wouldn't want to do that. But in the same respect, if it means that, that all citizens are going to take a hit, then I think they would understand that, but the question is, how much of a hit are they going to take? I don't know that we know that answer.
We don't even know what the effect is so far. I have not heard what the effect was on the 5% increase of the water. So, we don't even know where we stand on that enterprise fund after our first attempt to bring it pay-as-you-go, you know, balanced enterprise fund.
It was an unusual year with us buying water for six months. I mean, that really hurt.
So, you know, you can't correct the water, the enterprise funds by taking revenue off of property tax increase. It's not going to totally, it's not going to fix the problem on the enterprise fund.
So, we're tied. Does anybody want to change their mind?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may address counsel a couple of things.
Please do.
So, to address some of the questions by the mayor pro temp, so the impact of last year's 5%, that's a wash. We raised our rates the same amount as the cost of water, and since we purchased 100% of water for the first eight months, that's been a complete wash. Those rates went into effect, I believe, October 1st, as I recall. This council actually didn't resolve the veto, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I think early December, which meant by January, we were able to roll those bills out on the cycle. Since we always bill in the rears, we were by that point at least 90 days out. So, the actual impact at this point has been a wash. Now that we're back in production, it'll take time to obviously affect that, but at the same point, the, the 5% differential for that first eight to 10 months is a complete wash. The second thing is, you know, no disrespect with the comment that we have a windfall is an incorrect statement. When the council passed its budget last year, we actually anticipated the escalation in property taxes. You do that because you anticipate you'll have additional properties on the property rolls. You also anticipate reassessments. You also recognize that all of your large industrials actually went through expansions. So, so for those that, you know, may have been reassessed, there's also those that equally may have had their properties lowered in value. And for, for what folks may think, that has actually, has occurred. So, when you set your budget, we, as a staff, have to estimate fairly what we anticipate coming in. We would actually get slapped by the State Department of Audits if we basically said, well, we really expect, you know, $2 to come in, but we did our budget $1, and then at the end of the year, when the audit's done, you know, they saw you had this supposed windfall. So, you try to estimate, and this is why when you get your monthly financial statements, we are tracking to the budget and/or doing budget amendments, so that you are getting as much realistic data. So, the, the things that are out of your property tax, the first thing that comes out of that is what's called your MNO, or your Maintenance and Operations. That is your baseline fee. So, for instance, when we buy large vehicles or replace large vehicles, that's generally usually done out of your SPOS funds, it's done out of your drug seizure funds, it's not done out of property taxes. So, when you want to give pay parity, or when you want to raise the public safety salaries, or you look at overall bringing folks up to the pay scale, those are done with your property taxes. That is the raw amount that, that is being utilized. So, obviously, when you look at the fact that we've had to unforeseen, obviously, utilize an awful lot of Carroll County water, you're going to have to slide that amount off. So, although you have revenue, you also have expense attached to it, and, and those are your enterprise funds that shouldn't be, you know, scraping off your property tax, if you will. And with that said, rounding out the discussion, you, you, the purpose of setting a millage rate is to actually recoup. So, throughout the year, you've done very specific budget amendments. Those budget amendments and/or purchases actually, most of which were taken out of reserve. So, if you were to take that full picture into account, the picture actually doesn't show an actual rollback. What you're showing a rollback on is 2015 property taxes as a snapshot compared to 2016. Obviously, if we had held all costs constant from 2015 to 2016, you'd do a full rollback. You've seen this year, and I expressed at the work session, very specific impacts that you're experiencing that are beyond our control of containment. We are trying to cut costs in every way. We have held positions dark wherever we can, so that we, we make sure that we end the budget year on budget, not over budget, and that's the responsibility of staff. So, for instance, that is why the OIT position wasn't filled. As soon as we added a director, well, a director really shouldn't have to be filling as your OIC, your operator in charge, but we did that for budgetary constraints, because we knew what the impact was going... what the impact was going to be in that area. When you have healthcare coming in at significant double-digit, you have to address that. When you look at all the justifiable legal expenses that come to the table and things that were being addressed, those are legitimate expenses. You can't budget for everything. So when you look at what we have controlled or contained within the budget and have absorbed, while at the same time presented to the council way-budget based on those expectations, we based it on that 6.5 millage rate. So in transparency, when you go to your 2017 budget, you look at line item by line item comparison, just as you did last year, and you see what was projected in property taxes last year, what's projected in this year, you're going to see an increment. Flip side of that is, and I'll finish out with this, only those folks that saw a value increase of their property will be affected by the calculation of whatever millage rate you show. There are indeed properties throughout the entire city on both sides that actually did see a decrease, so it works in their benefit. You also, please, do have to take into account, we are in a growth pattern. We do actually, we are growing the digest, but we're also having to provide additional services to maintain. For instance, you added an entire boot camp crew in the budget, so we're trying to, you know, maintain that as well. Those are expense items. Flip side, staff is trying to bring money back into the city. Those things are like with your GDOT contracts. We have a successful contract with our Carroll County District. We're now in final negotiations with the Douglas County District, because those are separate districts. So wherever we can find money to bring back into the city, we're doing that. So that is sort of a bird's eye view, if you will, of your budget constraint. I don't know if that helps you in your decision, but staff is here, will gladly answer any questions about the budget and the taxation and what those taxes pay for.
I was aware of most of those explanations. What bothered me is that we didn't have the hard numbers from Carroll County. We have what they believe is going to happen, but that always makes you feel a little uneasy when you don't have the actual numbers from them. And secondarily, last year, we had a breakdown of where these increases came from, you know what I'm saying? This many came because of new houses were built, so we're bringing in additional revenue for that. Or in industry, a certain amount. And I would have liked to have had that, and it's my fault maybe for not thinking to ask for it. But those hard numbers, and then that breakdown, I think, would have been helpful. I understood most of the others. We do have increased costs. Insurance.
To your point.
And other things, but so did, so did the property owners. I thought that we might be able to work out a compromise. We're going to have to do something, because we have to break this tie tonight.
To your point, because you did say something critical, and from the staff perspective, we've made a note, we'll make sure that, you know, last year it was asked, we didn't bring those consolidations, so we'll make sure that next year we bring some of it. So you see an additional perspective. But you honed in on something very, very key, and that is that, you know, we've had preliminary numbers, and that's absolutely correct. Now that the deadline has passed, the amount projected will only get less. So all those appeals, when they go through, they will only, at this point, they're going to go through the process, they are only going to bill at 85%.
If they win, they'll be, if they win, their tax rate will be down.
And if it's in your favor, you will actually have a decrease. So you have what the county says is the best available data for right now, barring the appeal status. The appeals are closed, they're within the 8%. Once they go through the 4,000-plus appeals, whatever that final number was, I've seen anything from 4,200 give and takes out, then your actual, however those flowed out, and generally, from a staff perspective, we generally will put those in a class and say, basically, we like 5% off the top of those generally. Again, they're going to have to go through those. We don't know what the board assessors will do through the appeals process, but when the bills go out, you're only going to see 85% of those to meet your 2016. And depending on how long it takes the county to get through those appeals, then you may see some additional changes in revenue in 2017 from those. It's an unusual year because of the mass reassessment.
Yeah, and I'm even a little concerned about that, because we saw some irregularities, even in our own neighborhood, of how they assess property. Because here's the thing, if my house is worth more now than it was five years ago, and so I'm going to pay some more tax because my value is up, that's normal, that's natural. So obviously, the city would bring in more money from a taxpayer like me, because guess what? My house value is up. When my house value was down, I paid less in taxes. It was kind of nice, as long as you don't want to sell your house when it's depressed like that, you're okay, because your tax bill is down. So I understand that bringing extra revenue doesn't mean you're always hammering people. We've got to break this tie.
How about a 6.3? I mean, we can sit here and wheel and deal all day long.
This will still give us the opportunity a year from now, when we come back here again, if we feel like we've overdone it, to back it down, roll it back a little more. I know some people are really getting hit with these reassessments on county taxes especially. Is there any wiggle room for compromise under 6.5?
Maybe we need to. If you want, you know, you want to talk about compromise, that's fine, we'll talk about compromise, and then we'll turn around next month and talk about water and sewer rates, and just see how high they're going to go.
They got, your enterprise fund's got to be taken care of, no matter what we do about this tax rate.
Depends. You know, and you're sitting there with.
The problem's not.
The press in front of you saying that, okay, you know, we're not going to do a lot, you know, we're talking about a nickel a day for a house worth $100,000. Yet here, next month, or possibly the next, we're talking about a, I don't know how much of a raise for water and sewer. And that's where the issue is going to come in. You know, I don't mind getting beat up on it. Coaching and teaching, I've been beat up on it all my life. But I promise you that the people is not going to stand for a small raise on water and sewer, and a small raise on taxes, and the understanding that somewhere down the road, we're going to go a million dollars out of the general fund each year, going toward paying something that shouldn't be paid for. So, you know, my issue is, and will always be, that if we can go up a little bit, and like I say, a nickel a day, $18 a year for a house worth $100,000, we can go up $18 a year, and then go up a little bit on the water and sewer each year, then we're going, the citizens, as well as myself, who is always, is on a fixed income, will be able to accommodate that. It may mean I can't buy a new fishing rod, but it's okay. I still have the ability to live comfortable and not be hit each month with $50, $60, $70 a month bill from the City of Villarica.
Okay, you say if we can go up, because we're, this is done estimated on six and a half. The rollback, and already had no tax increase, it'd be around six. So we are actually going up a little bit, the city's going to get some revenue out of this, no matter what.
That's correct.
It's a matter of.
6.048 is what it's going, it would go down to.
Yeah, that's right, close to six.
You said 6.30, okay, that's fine. But there again, where do we draw the line over here on the water sewer?
We're going to have to attack the water sewer. You know we're going to have to fix that, because it's going to.
What's your comment on water sewer then? I may change my vote, if you can come up with a water sewer rate.
I can't give it to you tonight, because they got to give me some information. I'd like to see the numbers on it. But we got to find a way, there's a spending problem with water and sewer, you know, there's two sides to everything. You've got your revenue, which we're pulling off the general fund to help pay for, and then you've got your spending, which is going on with those enterprise funds. So we got to fix the enterprise fund one way or another.
I don't disagree with you. You know, my issue with the whole thing is not hitting the citizens with two sides of going up on a great amount of money. You know, and I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll simply make the motion that we have the millage rate at 6.50.
I second. All in favor? All opposed?
Now, with that being said, with that being said, I'd like the staff to undertake the idea of maybe three tiers of what it's going to take to bring the water and sewer fund up to par, not necessarily $800,000 worth, but to a point that, over a period of time, that we don't have to pay out of our general fund, or those two enterprise funds to be solvent. Is that going to be an issue?
From staff perspective, we will engage a rate study. Ideally, I want to look at a tiered approach, and then we will present a five-year plan that, number one, meets your debt policy obligations first. That's the first thing. And then from there, hopefully, within five years, starts to write. I want to thank the council for setting the millage rate at 6.5, because tomorrow's memo was going to say that if it was less than that, we were looking at $203,000 in immediate cuts in the months of September, October, and over in December, in order to make ends meet. So for that, I know it's a tough decision, but know that staff is looking at every penny. It does look at the budget, and it will certainly research the water rates. We'll do a water rate study and bring that back to you. And then we'll also make sure that next year, we have more finite millage data. It was, the goal was to actually have that, and actually have a nice interactive map this year. Unfortunately, it was very difficult getting the data in a timely fashion, so we will work to make that happen for next year as well.
Does that study cost any money, or is that something we take care of in-house?
There's two ways to go at it, but we're going to try to work with our bond provider and see if we can't squeeze them a little, and see if they can assist us with some services. We already have some data already, but to run some of the five-year actuaries, it's going to take a lot of number crunching. We don't have a budget analyst available, our staff already is pretty hilt, so we're going to see whether or not we can do it without increase to budget, or we can have to do it ourselves.
So is that a, is that a yes?
I don't really.
Or a no?
You know, if we wanted to do a professional one.
That's a city manager answer.
Yeah, if we wanted to do a professional one, but you just passed the millage rate, and if I'm going to look you and say, you know, I'm going to need additional money.
You'll let us, but you'll let us know.
So I'm going to try.
We'll know, before anything happens, it'll be brought to us.
Yeah, the goal's not to spend money, the goal's to figure out how to squeeze what we get on just about everything we're doing right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was fun.
Nope. Item number two is alcohol license.
Okay, thanks Ken.
We got it.
He has to run, so no disrespect to the staff, you'd be watching it on TV. This is item B2, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This is from Uncorked on Main. This is adding Mr. Marvin S. Dunson to the current wine and craft beer boutique license for Uncorked on Main LLC. All requirements have already been vetted and adhered to, so this is a staff recommendation for approval.
All right, do I get a vote to approve this?
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? So that means that we have a 3-1 vote to approve of the addition to the alcohol license. Item number three, B3, is conditional use permit.
I'd like to ask that we table item three until after the first of the year?
Why don't we table it to December the first? Because if we don't have a runoff, we could take care of it, and she won't have to pay an extra fee.
If we don't have a runoff?
Right.
So we'll consider it.
We can always table it again in December.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. I make a motion that we table it until December, assuming that we will have the mayor and ward four seat filled.
I second it.
Okay, it has been moved to say that we will table item B3 until December. All in favor, show of hands. Opposed is no. So therefore, we will table that. Item number four, B, is adopting the zoning map.
We took that off, deleted it.
You took it off, that's right. Delete it?
It was deleted item for agenda.
Okay, all right, we're taking that off, we deleted that. It wasn't off on my paper, that's good. Item C1, item C was talking about Public Works, I think. City manager, you, you going to do that for Pete first?
Yes, this is.
Item number one, the North Loop Project.
Yes, when the governing body originally moved forward for the North Loop Project, it had agreed to specific obligations. In this case, this is a soil survey services. This has been competitively bid, this is for the North Loop Project. It is a recommendation of an award to ECS Southeast LLC in the amount of $64,500, so that you know that's paid for by your property tax revenue. And if the council approves that, that pretty much eliminates the remainder of the council's contingency budget.
All right, do I get a motion to approve this award and this contract?
I make a motion to approve.
Checking. All in favor?
And this was the $64,000 one?
Yes.
$64,500, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor? Fully buy. It's approved. Item number two, the grapple truck.
Okay, this is, all right, during the council meeting, I'd mentioned that what was presented to you in your book had been sold, it was actually sold four days prior, and that I was going to seek an opportunity from the council to move on something fast. We did, actually, this is the third one that's come available, we've lost out on two others. However, there is a vehicle that is available to us now, if the council wants to take those and pass them down. This one has not gone on the market for sale yet, this is a 2008 Freightliner M2 grapple truck. This particular truck would meet all the same specifications as previously requested. In chatting with Mr. Davis, who is over Fleet Services as part of his responsibilities, he has brought this truck to our attention and has recommended that we aggressively go after this. The company is asking that a deposit be put down if the council decides that wants to move on it. You've got a price breakdown, the total actual cost on this truck is $61,425. If you notice, the actual negotiated price for the Freightliner truck itself, there's a dealer fee that is, goes to the Apex dealer. The Apex is the only entity that can actually back the warranty, so there's no sales tax. You see a shipping of $1,075. Certainly, if we had a Class 1 operator, we could send them down to West Palm Beach and drive it, but quite frankly, sending a freight is actually cheaper, we believe. You see the titling fees, and then you see an additional warranty by ECM, we are recommending that, for a total of $61,425. Over and above that is a request on top of that for roughly about $2,500, to have a certified mechanic that is a city, is working on behalf of the city, that will actually go to Apex, inspect the entire truck, top to bottom. And Apex has agreed that anything that they find, any issues of mechanical nature, they will go ahead and make those repairs as part of that. Now, how do we pay for this? As it was mentioned in the work session, when we did the 2016 budget, originally, we thought that it was actually a recommendation from Public Works that the repairs were far too great for the water truck. Again, I'm always surprised at staff being able to come up with pretty ingenious solutions, so they were able to actually repair that truck at substantially less cost. So this would come out of the SPOSS dollars, there's roughly about $90,000 left in that SPOSS account. If we back out the $61,425 of the purchase, that would relieve about $28,575. So this is what staff is proposing. Staff would like the council to go ahead and authorize the city manager to negotiate and purchase this truck, and immediately go ahead and put the deposit. the deposit on it, and then go ahead and have the third-party inspection of the vehicle done. That would leave, in the budget, with no increase, no decrease, that would leave about twenty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars of SPOLOST funds available in there. I would like to take those funds and then go ahead and purchase one final police explorer in 2016. The next budget item that you have coming before you then is a sale of a drug surplus vehicle. We would like to take the proceeds of that, put it back into the drug surplus, take that money and outfit that car out of the drug seizure. So this is a request to go ahead and kill two birds with one stone. One is to purchase a grapple truck for the sixty-one four-two-five, and then also use the remaining funds to buy one additional 2017 Ford Explorer police vehicle, and then it would be budget-neutral with SPOLOST funds. Keep in mind, these are 2008 leftover SPOLOST funds. They're not SPOLOST funds out of the current 2015, so there is a timetable to spend those within the cycle. So I certainly will answer any questions. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
I've got one question here. Off of this Apex equipment, you quoted the twenty-one seventy-five warranty, but on the right-hand side, on the total cost, it shows zero.
That's a optional. It's whether or not we want it. Warranties are actually coming out of our maintenance budget. They don't come out of the capital budget. That's why it's on the left column, not the right.
Okay. So we're not going to take the warranty. Okay.
We will get the warranty, but it's going to come out of our operating maintenance agreement, sir.
So did this, when did this truck show up, this new one?
Today.
I was going to say, I've heard, this is the third story I'm getting, so this just happened. Last I knew, we were going to put some money and say, if it's within this range, you can do something about it, because we keep losing them. They're sold by the time we have a meeting.
This one actually came from another municipality, so it actually was being used for exactly what we want it for.
This is better than the ninety thousand dollars he was asking for.
Well, yeah, I liked it.
He was going to take a vacation.
I liked that last one. That was for fifty-something thousand, too, that we lost, but okay.
Totally against me and Charlie going and getting this?
I can drive it back.
You have a commercial driver license?
I have a CDL. Yes, sir, I do.
You can pick it up.
Just checking to make sure.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Are you going to charge this mileage, or are you just going to do meals, or what's your plan?
Well, as long as there's a trailer hitch on the back of the truck, I mean, it's simple.
Oh, you're going to put it on the truck and drive it back?
No, on the one down. Perhaps I carry the boat.
Okay. Do I get a motion to...
I'm going to make a motion that we spend sixty-one thousand four twenty-five.
Do I get a motion that we will do this, purchase this grapple second?
I made the motion.
Okay. It's been properly moved a second that we will purchase this grapple truck for sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, that sells that. Okay.
We're going to let it drive it back.
Wait a minute. Let me finish. The next, is will we vote to do the surplus to buying the vehicle and doing all of the things on this police car since with the extra money that's being lent?
Move to do that.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved a second that we will take the surplus money and buy our good chief department a new vehicle, and then we will use the surplus money to retail and all that. Am I right?
There's another piece of that we've got to...
All right. Okay. It's been moved a second that we will do this for the grapple truck, and this is for the surplus, and to bind the vehicle for the police department. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. It has been properly moved a second that we will do this. What was you thinking to say, Mr.?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay. Next on the item is D, Parks Recreation Leisure Services. First on that is the Fullerville Trailhead. Oh, did I? No, we just did that. Sweetie? Grant?
Not yet.
This is in the Public Works Department, so Ms. Vicki is here.
Oh, the Jeep Cherokee is a surplus. That is the salvage.
Oh, okay.
I thought you just did that.
We did.
We did that.
Okay.
We passed it on with the rest of them.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is a request to approve Hembry Contracting for construction services of the Fullerville Trailhead Project. As you're aware, the City of Villarica was awarded half a million dollars in transportation fund from the Georgia Department of Transportation in order to construct this Fullerville Trailhead. The city has a required twenty percent match for this particular project, and so, and moving forward, we want to, again, make the recommendation of Hembry Contracting to commence construction. The expected start timeframe will be October, just to follow up on the conversation from last week. More or less summarize it really quickly. This is a project that's been in the works for several years, so we're finally at the point where we will be ready to begin construction.
Obviously, they're the low bid.
They're the low bid. We had total three respondents altogether.
So you wanted us to give...
How much of this?
Go ahead with this contract.
Yes, approving Hembry Contracting as the contractor for the construction of the trailhead.
How much of this is Villarica money? I see we got five hundred thousand federal funds.
Right. So we were awarded five hundred thousand dollars as part of the T grant. We're responsible for a twenty percent match, which would be up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And to specifically answer the council members' question, you budgeted six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in your capital budget for this.
And we're going to use a hundred and twenty-five of that.
This has been in the works...
Well...
How many years has this been in the works?
There won't be change orders, because you're responsible for making sure that you bill the entire bathroom shelter thing. So you, once all the water lines, sewer lines, all that's put in, which is our responsibility, I anticipate it's going to bump right up against that six twenty-five. So I don't want you to be surprised. That's why it's budgeted.
I make a motion to approve Hembry Contracting for the work on the Fullerville Trailhead Project.
Second.
It's been moved a second that we will use the Hembry Contracting contract as part of this trailhead. All in favor? Four, zero. So we would do that.
So for the second item, I don't know if you want to sound it or not, but this is a separate but related item, which is Part Two, which is, staff is making the recommendation that AMEC Foster Wheeler provide construction, management, and inspections for the Fullerville Trailhead Project. Their proposal was for twenty-five thousand dollars. That's what we're making the recommendation that you approve that.
All right. Do I get a motion to approve this?
Do we beat this up? Okay. Let's just beat it out.
This is the engineering firm. The city has had, I guess, a standby contract with AMEC Foster Wheeler for a number of years. They did the original design on the Fullerville Trailhead, so...
We're just using their plans?
We're using their plans, and they're, yes, they're going to manage the construction for us.
Make a motion that we approve AMEC Foster Wheeler to do the construction and engineering in the amount of twenty-five thousand.
A second. All in favor? It's been properly moved a second that they will go ahead with the, what is it, AMEC Foster Wheeler Engineering Service to complete this. Item E, the governing body. We have a zoning board appeals, but we will consider, and of all times, he's not here tonight, Mr. Larry Coos to be appointed to the zoning board appeals.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved a second that we will appoint Mr. Larry Coos to the zoning board of appeals. All in favor? Oppose? Four, zero. Item number two, zoning, the adoption of the proposed bylaws for the zoning board of appeals. Do I get a motion to adopt it? Do I get questions?
Have you looked at some?
I have looked over them, and they seem reasonable to me.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Been properly moved a second that we will accept, excuse me, accept the proposed bylaws for the zoning board of appeals. All in favor? Vote four, zero. Item number four under E is market study. Oh, excuse me, I skipped one. Item number three, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Villarica and Carroll County Hospital Authority for sale of a portion of land on North Avenue.
At section north of Old Stone Road.
Only.
Okay. Can we ask that the city manager give a basic explanation of this so the people sitting in the audience will know what we're doing here?
Yes. So the two centaur is that the hospital is expanding, so it had been, over time, acquiring all the properties around it. It is in the final throes of about to start to submit building plans to the city. Generally, we'll do pre-planning, pre-construction meetings, things of that nature. The hospital has welcomed the city staff to come in and meet with them. When we met with the hospital, one thing that was very apparent, looking at their preliminary plans, was that they actually were going to have to cut back on their expansion, because this particular stretch of road would actually violate some setback requirements. So when we started to talk cooperatively, we had put on the table, well, suppose the city council had made a decision to go ahead and abandon that road, and then you can't give away anything for free. So then we, after the council agreed with that, seeing some of their plans, they knew that they were going to, the hospital was going to make significant improvements to this area so that it could serve the hospital, and it still would, of course, be accessible. There's going to be a little roundabout. They're going to change the elevation, things of that nature. Now, once you have this, then the question is, okay, you can't just gift something. So we sat down, we had some meetings with the hospital, and they've agreed to pay to the city a hundred thousand dollars for that stretch. Part of the discussion also was that the hospital knew that we were seeking some wherewithal on how we were going to do the landscaping for the library. So the hospital was very generous on saying, well, for a hundred thousand, there's nothing in the document that says it's earmarked for landscaping, so if the council sees fit, we want to make that as a motion, so that you know in perspective what landscaping costs. The bid on just the bankhead seventy-eight sixty-one quarter was sixty thousand. Not included in that cost was all of the engineering that went in place that AMEC did for the master plan in order to get us to a landscape architectural design that could even go out for bid. In the original architectural agreements for the new library, they had earmarked a line item of twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five thousand will not cover the grading, the retaining walls, and the landscaping, the irrigation plan for that library. So this is a request for the council to go ahead and consider sale of that road, but then to earmark those funds for landscaping the library to make ends meet.
All right. Does that mean that it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand for landscaping or a hundred thousand?
There's still some money in the budget. My goal is, and this may cause some angst, we learned a lot of lessons on the seventy-eight bankhead, so I'm going to utilize as much resources as I can to cut costs. When we put it out for initial bid, we only had one responsive bidder come to the table, so there's not really competitive spirit there. We want to go ahead and put together a landscape plan, and then have folks bid on the plan, and then have staff do as much. There are some things staff can't do. We can't do grading to civil engineering plans. We can't do, we don't have the resources on staff to do proper retaining walls. We don't have the equipment to move rock and bring in decorative rock. So there are things that we will not be able to utilize. We also learned big lessons on that intersection, and that is, you can't tie up all your inmate crews for weeks on end on projects and still expect litter and right away to get mowed. So there's going to have to be some compromise on this all the way around.
Yeah, but are we adding that twenty-five thousand as...
No.
Okay. So it's a hundred thousand total.
No. The only thing in the city's control is that hundred thousand, sir.
Okay.
That little section of road that they're purchasing from the city runs right up there on the south side of the building between Old Stone and Dallas Highway.
South side of the building?
Yep.
Yeah, on the back side of the hospital.
Yeah, north of Old Stone Road, North Avenue, north of Old Stone Road.
Yeah. If you're on Dallas Highway facing the hospital, it's the road portion on your right, and it's separated by an existing parking lot and the old helipad.
And the old hospital.
And the old hospital, yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the agreement and use the hundred thousand dollar donation for landscaping on the new library.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Council.
All right. You get your approval. All right. Now, number four, market study and request Villarica Downtown Development Authority for the city to participate in a market study for the purpose of determining feasibility of downtown hotel and conference center. The city has requested to contribute five thousand dollars toward this study. How do the council feel?
Uh...
Good question.
I guess my issue is, and I think I remember that DDA is giving five thousand dollars already, Georgia Power is giving five thousand dollars already. Somebody else giving five thousand dollars?
The Development Authority.
DDA.
Yeah. And then we're going to give five thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars worth.
So twenty thousand dollars worth to tell us that we need a hotel conference center downtown with no place to put it.
That's one perspective, sir.
It's not that they tell us. It's that...
Right on cue.
You were like it again.
The floor in the office is working.
Boy, you saved me. All right. Ask that man.
I was going to come and get you.
Okay. The question is...
We want five thousand dollars from Downtown Development Authority. We want five thousand dollars for Georgia Power. We want five thousand dollars from DDA. Or who else was it?
Development Authority.
Yeah. And then we want five thousand dollars for the City of Villarica to do, have a study to figure out, we need a downtown hotel and conference center with no place to put it.
Where would they put it? Yeah.
The issue was going to be to tear down the Avante Building and put it there. But now then, where are you going to put all the things that are in the Avante Building, including the maintenance shop for the City of Villarica? So where do you get that money?
From what they're going to pay us to put their hotels in.
And why would you tear down a perfectly good building?
Well, the Avante Building, a perfectly good building. Basically, what we're trying to do is establish the feasibility of a hotel conference center in the City of Villarica, specifically downtown. It may be by the time this market study is done that the Avante Building may not be the site. The master plan is basically a guiding principle to say, this is what we think should be here. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's where it's going to go. As a matter of fact, we're in the process of working on the Butterballs Welcome Center project, and the layout and design that UGA presented is no... The fourth high school in Athens.
I have some water. Thank you.
The design that the architect actually done, it looks nothing like what was presented in the master plan. The master plan is just some recommendations on what we should do. The reality is, we know that Villarica is a growing market, but a developer is not going to look at this market for any significant project like that without us first having a market study to determine whether or not it's feasible to do that here in Villarica. As I had mentioned last week, we reached out to Carroll Tomorrow to kind of help us with this project. They talked to some developers, and every developer that they talked to said, well, do you have a market study? And their thing was, well, when you get a market study, come back to us, and then we'll talk with you. So the first step to even having this dialogue with a developer is the market study. Now, once we do the... Now, once we do the market study and we identify a developer, then through that process of negotiating, we determine where, where does the hotel conference center go? If it is the Avante Building, then what is the plan for moving what's in the Avante Building to a new location? Quite frankly, why, you know, I love the convenience of having the shop there when my car is messed up. I could take it back there and tell the guys the windows don't work, this and that and the other.
Your city car.
Yeah, my city car. Yes, it's in my gray retired police.
The one with two hundred thousand miles on it?
Yes.
You're only allowed to drive in town so that you can make sure you can get back to where you need to be.
Transmission slips and all of that.
Don't give you trouble, eh?
Yeah, it's very convenient to take it next door, but as I always say when I get up here and do presentations, is that the highest and best use for our downtown, to have that shop in our downtown? And that's what we will decide once we go through the process with the feasibility study.
Would you want to compare this to the, the North Loop?
Would I want to compare it to the North Loop?
Yeah, uh, you know, we.
I'll get this done faster than fifty years.
In nineteen sixty-five, I, I found some information about the North Loop. Now, now.
I will remind you that that involves the federal government and all their strings and stipulations. We will not be looking for the Indiana bat over here.
Well, that's the problem, though, is, is anything we do now, we've had to redo several things, a, as many as three of the same detailed studies for the North Loop based on us doing it then, and then five years later had to redo it again, and then redo it again.
That's correct.
And I, I guess my, my question is, if we do this study, what's the, the ability for it to change over the next three to five years based on the city growing or, or actually moving from where it's at now, let's say, down toward I twenty? Or something of that nature. I, I, I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't have a problem with the money going to the study. I guess the timing is more important to me as far as figuring out where the city is gonna be. There's a hundred and twenty-five acres. That way we could put a pretty big city in. So I, I, that's my, that's my issue.
And those are, that's a, a great point. I will say there's a few difference in this situation than, than the North Loop. First of all, this project is gonna be heavily contingent on the private sector, and they're in the business of making money. And so if the feasibility comes back and says, hey, Villarica's a prime location, I don't really think we're gonna have a problem identifying a private investor that's gonna want to do this project. And they're gonna want to move fast because they want to kind of get ahead of the curve, because quite frankly, Villarica is, as I tell people, one of the fastest growing cities in the state of Georgia, and that's no secret to us, and people are gonna want to take advantage of that from, from a capital standpoint. So this feasibility study, if it comes back positive, I, I don't think, we definitely won't be sitting here fifty years talking about this.
I'm sure I'll, we'll be able to assist us.
You've asked for twenty thousand dollars, but you've only identified three spots, Georgia Power Five, DDA Five, and the City Five. Where's the other five coming from?
The Development Authority. We're gonna make a request. We have submitted a written request to the Villarica Development Authority.
VRDA.
They would be the fourth.
They would be the fourth.
I'll bet you that's on your agenda for tomorrow night.
I bet it is, too.
Chris, are you going to that meeting?
Uh, I didn't. If it's close at the office, I'll run to it when it comes up.
I make a motion that we invest that five thousand dollars for the market study to, is this going to? DDA at this point, right? It's not the Visitors Bureau, it's DDA.
This is DDA project.
Yeah.
I guess my, where's the money coming from?
Exactly.
All right, well, then, if that's the case.
That's supposed to be Danny's question.
It's gonna come out of, we're gonna have to, we, all right, if you approve it, and we can't find between now and the end of the year, five thousand dollars, we'll be back at you and asking you to take it from reserves.
You said we used that for reserve.
Or you could just say upfront, you know, go ahead and take it from reserves now, and we'll be done with it.
What about the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we give, DDA, was it?
You have a revolving loan fund.
Yes.
You, you have those funds that are earmarked out there.
I assume if DDA is gonna do something, they're gonna have five thousand dollars out of that fund.
Yeah, I, I will say that that money is a loan to the DDA, so the DDA has to repay that money.
So we're loaning five and paying five.
No, not this. That twenty-five thousand is, not this.
We're into it for.
All right. Well, so that you know, we, we, we still, by the end of the year, gotta figure out where the fifteen thousand's coming from for the Butterball thing. So like I said, you know, when you take actions, it, it's like a cash register, and, and so, so it's why we're holding certain positions. And when folks say, why hasn't such and such been advertised? Well, you know, the, the reality is, is because we're always watching the budget. So, so we have to find money. So when you make conscious decisions, you know, and, and it's the cost of, of growing, if you will, the, here's, here's the positive things. The positive things is we have more building permits going on, development, everything. So, so that again, next year means your tax, your digest is gonna grow. Those are positive things, but.
And taxes go up.
Yeah, it, well, and I didn't say that. Your, your, your rates stay the same. So, so when you look at the positive, it's the cost of doing business. You are in a growing mode. This is a great position to be in. But every time you raise your hand, know that, you know, if I have to get a little sound on my phone that's a cash register, let me know. But, but you ask a very valid question. Where's the money gonna come from? You all vote for it. That means that we're gonna have to find it in the budget, which, which means we find it in the budget, we cut in the budget, or it comes out of your reserves. Those are your only choices.
So rather than Mr. Pike being up here, we need DDA up here asking for the grant millennial fifteen thousand dollars that could be repaid as a loan to do Butterballs and to do this, and that's what we ask them to do to begin with, just come up with projects they could, they'd be okay with.
You, you always have that as an option, yes, sir.
I just want to, before I make my motion again, just preface this, that this did not come out of the blue. This is the work of months and months of the Renaissance program with input from not just committees and steering committees that I sat on and a number of other people sat on, and then the focus groups. We're trying to move forward with a plan that we developed rather than developing a plan and sticking it on a shelf. This is part of moving forward with that plan that we've been working on.
So where do you get with the motion?
So I'm going to make a motion again that we give, the other one is a loan, the five thousand dollars to the DDA for this market study to bring private business in here, not expand government downtown.
Second.
It's been properly moved this second that we will do the five thousand dollars for this, towards the stud, the market study for the hotel. Do I get a show of hands with the ones that approved it? Four, zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
I'm gonna go work on Gold Rush Festival.
Hey, Chris, what time's the parade start on Friday? I mean, Saturday?
Saturday.
All right, Chris, he's awake.
Ten o'clock on Saturday.
Thank you.
Councilman Best will have you a very nice convertible.
What color? He wants to know what color, 'cause he said if it's orange or gold, I'm just saying.
Take it red and black.
Okay, there you go. All right, thank you, Chris. We're on it.
All right, item number five under E is, we're gonna combine those. We want a, a, a motion to adopt the minutes from the special call meeting June the thirtieth and the council meeting on July fifth, the special call meeting July twenty-sixth, the council meeting on August the second, and the special call meeting on August the thirtieth. Do I get?
I'd like to see a show of hands of who all has read every one of those.
So moved. I read everyone.
All the, all the posts. I guess it's a goal.
I was gonna make a motion.
I got a question before we adjourn.
Okay, I've got one more thing, and then I'll let you ask your question. It was, I guess it was, it was for, okay. We. I would just, okay, and, and Maryland's seconding, okay. I would just like to recognize our scout troop that have set there so patiently. Y'all, we don't do this all the time. Meeting doesn't last that long all the time. We don't go.
It's usually worse.
But anyway, we would just like to recognize you all and for your attending and seeing some of the works of the council, and who is our scoutmaster?
I'd like to have a question. I'm waiting for a merit badge. I thought so.
I guess we could spare y'all a minute. Y'all have been patient so we can be a, come on up.
You should get a badge for sitting through one of those.
So come on up scoutmaster, and let us, let, let us know about you and what you, what you wanna.
I remember, I remember you.
You can introduce your troop to us.
You can do a photo with them.
Yeah, I, I.
I'm Eric Hansen. I'm with troop two-two-eight. I'm assistant scoutmaster. Our scoutmaster's Larry Corr, and he's not here tonight. But we're working on the merit badge, assistant shipping community. There are three of those required, three of those merit badges, one's community, one's nation, one's world. And these are the boys that are looking for that merit badge. It is an Eagle-required merit badge, and several of those boys are working very hard on that.
All right.
I really support scouts because my father followed us all the way through the scouting program. My brother and I both became Eagles and went all the way through it. I went to Jamborees and all that stuff. That's good program. I'll keep it up.
You want to introduce them?
Would you like to introduce them to us? Let them stand up. And y'all come up one at a time as he introducing. We can, our city manager would just love to take a picture.
Smile.
A few pictures.
This is my son, Chris Hansen.
All right. Hi, Chris.
And then Nick Taylor.
Okay.
Alex McLendon. Taylor Gochuk. Um, Peter McLean. Matthew Dumas. And then Miller Glove, Glove Grove. And Logan.
All right. We're so glad to have you all with us and hope that this will help you all toward your merit.
Y'all turn around a second. Y'all turn around a face a second. Y'all don't get a chance to do this very often. Y'all got any questions? Right, hey, look, you never get.
How soon are we gonna turn, right?
You're never gonna get a chance.
That's the question.
Go ahead.
Do y'all have questions?
Really?
This governmental body.
Go ahead, really?
Is it dinner time yet?
Okay.
All right, if you ain't gonna, I'm sorry.
All right, okay.
You put them on the spot.
Now you can turn them back around and get your pictures made so you can.
You got, hey, watch out for her now. If you don't do it her way, she'll bite you. You got that right.
Oh, me.
We're gonna have to stand up, I guess.
Yeah, why?
Because we're all ready. Wait, 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 you see it?
I heard that. Did you say smile? Pass on his elbow.
Hand yours to David and he'll get it. He's tall.
Chrissy, hang on a minute. We'll move for you.
All right, looking at me, look at me, smile, smile, smile. All right, looking at me, don't look at her. Bad things happen when you look at her.
You got that right.
There you go, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, Chrissy.
Can't he just send you one?
Thank you, guys. Y'all come back anytime. You need another merit badge, come back.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved this second that we will adjourn. All in favor, show your hand. Get your boots and let's go.
Do you ever use the gavel?
Yes, I do. I'm gonna start you when we get to be long with it.
She almost threw it at me yesterday.
I gotta get Elmo back out.
Yes, you have. It wasn't a little bit for the night, but it was us. It wasn't the audience, so. We're dismissed, so you all can, you all can go if you want.
They like it so much, they're gonna stay.
No, you, you see Dave got his coat on. He ready to go. I know it. I get it.
They got mine today.
I don't need all of this.
Where'd that go? Dang it. I'm not. I'm on.